It's nine o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting of the Carrington County Commissioners to order. If you'd please rise, I'll have Commissioner Johnson lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the county of the states of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, my friend. Okay, um, number two, uh, if there's, uh, someone would like a public, uh, comment, uh, you can either do it in person or you can use the telephone number six oh five, eight eight two six two four eight, or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Um, and if you have a cell phone, if you could please silence it, and if you need to take a call, you could do it in the hallway, please. Number three, is there any conflict at interest?
Nope, nope, no, no.
Okay, um, number four, um, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number five, the motion to approve the August sixth, uh, twenty twenty-four minutes.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman to approve the minutes of the August sixth meetings, or any additions or corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're gonna skip down to, uh, monthly reports. And we'll start out with, uh, Jody.
Morning, Jody.
Hard to believe it's already the middle of August, but.
All right, so achievement days went well. Um, a big thank you to all of our volunteers and judges who helped make it a success, along with all of our four H supporter supporters and sponsors that come and help support our four H youth. Um, four H have until today to finish registering for the South Dakota State Fair if they wanna do, um, Youth in Action livestock or display exhibits, so they have till midnight tonight. All results during the state fair will be found on our extension website under four H and State Fair. It's extension dot S D state dot E D U. Um, throughout the achievement day or throughout state fair, so, um, just congratulations to our four H youth. And I'm co-chair of the Special Foods and Fashion Review Committee, so we've got some work to do with papers before we get to state fair. Um, and that takes me through Thursday through Sunday of state fair of, of activities for that. Um, our new four H year begins on October first, so kids can start enrolling on October first for a new year. Um, four H youths will now work on their four H record book and apply for awards, and our four H recognition event will be Sunday, October twenty-seventh, um, at two o'clock. And then our S D S U extension conference will be in Spearfish this year, um, September thirtieth through October second. So there's moving it around from Brookings to last year to Pier to this year in Spearfish. So, any questions or? That's how time flies.
Yeah, someone asked me just the other day, Jody, and it was from another county, and they were wondering how our numbers were, you know, now that the year is coming to an end, did we?
I would say staying steady, and we have a lot of youth, I bet you a third of our youth are even in shooting sports and stuff too. And they're still doing shooting sports right now. They're outdoors doing trap and skeet and shooting down at the, um, gun range right now too. So they're still continuing shooting sports even through the summer now, so, so that's great.
And I, I think we're pretty fortunate. I think some of them have dropped off. And I said that, and ours is, I thought for sure it stayed the same, or even had grown some.
You have a lot of younger ones, so, yeah.
Well, that, uh, the ones who looked like should really help.
The clover buds.
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Jody. Okay, uh.
Director of Equalization, we're not going here today. She has something.
Oh, okay, well, then we'll, uh, go down to the auditor.
All right, good morning, everyone. Um, the property tax values for taxes payable in twenty twenty-five have been transferred into the auditor software from Director of Equalization. Waiting for the centrally assessed utility values. They'll arrive later in August, and then the work will begin, for the calculation of property tax levies. Calls will start being made. We have some that have said they'll come back from the primary to, uh, get the workers selected for the, uh, general election on, uh, November fifth. I also have put in the paper, it will be in the Gazette on Thursday, the Watertown Public Opinion on Saturday, to, uh, a notice of public hearing for the budget supplement for the twenty twenty-four general fund budget for the purpose of the court-appointed attorney expenditures. So we will be having that, uh, public hearing on Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, to transfer over that amount of two hundred seventy-five thousand, six ninety-seven eighty from the clerk that we received back. Also, um, I'll, I have pamphlets in my office. Secretary of State has sent out the twenty twenty-four ballot questions and explanations, so I will pass those around. That will be good for the public to know that they can come to the office and receive those. And also, uh, we had news from our health insurance. Our increase this year is going to be nine point four percent. So I will give each one of you one of those as well. You can take that and look, look that over of how, what kinda drove some of that increase. So that is all that I have.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just a.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, um, on those ballot questions, I just would urge the public to take a look at those. There's a lot of them. Uh, I think I was in the office looking at that handout yesterday, and that thing is, uh, I mean, it, it pays to study that stuff. Um, and then the, uh, on the, just a question on the, um, health insurance. So I think we budgeted ten percent, so that's pretty close. I guess the question is, is it worth going through and adjusting that to nine and nine point four percent? I mean, to get a, I, I, I'm not sure how much that would, that would impact the budget to make it, as I know that's a bit of a.
Well, it, it, it's all going. Yeah, sorry. It will all stem on your, uh, your negotiations with your unions as well. So I don't know if we wanna make any adjustments at this point, because that will probably play a part in some of those negotiations. That's just my suggestion, but.
Yeah, it would, well, it would be, I guess, it would have to be like in a, you know, now that, now that we're kind of at the point where we're, we're close to the provisional or the, the provisional budget being published, it probably have to be a motion before we approve. So some, anyways, something to think about.
That might be a little cumbersome, I guess. Yeah, it just depends on what you guys are going to do. You know, you have a certain amount that you planned on increasing it every year. Does that remain the same? Does that's, then, then it's more for the employees, is it not? You know, those are things you'll have to be in discussion with yet. So I, I would suggest just leaving it alone for now.
Okay.
Guess see where you go.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Brenda. Um, okay, let's, uh, move back up to number six. Uh, we'll have, uh, Mark Junker come up from Banner and Rick for our bridge inspections.
Good morning, Mark.
Good morning.
Rick.
Good morning.
Hard copies, information for all you guys.
Thank you.
Mark, if you wanna tell me when to flip the page on your slide presentation, I can do that.
Be great. Thanks, Lee.
Wow. It's a banner. No pun intended.
You can, uh, look to the second slide there, Lee. Uh, good morning. Uh, my name's Mark with Banner Associates. Had the privilege of working with the county for twenty-one years doing bridge inspections. Uh, the purpose of the meeting with the commission this morning is to go over the results of the twenty twenty-four bridge inspections. And I met with, uh, Highway Superintendent Rick and Assistant Highway Superintendent Lynn. This morning at the county highway shop, we went over the details of the bridge inspections. Next slide, Lee. Uh, just a review of the definition of a bridge, uh, that, that is on my inspection list. These are the inspections of, uh, the larger bridges in the county. They have to have an opening of twenty feet or more to be on my inspection list. And it is a federal requirement that bridges be inspected every two years. There are some exceptions to that. Uh, and the DOT does pick up eighty percent of the cost of the bridge inspections, and Carrington County pays twenty percent. Uh, the reasons consultants are out inspecting bridges is for the safety of the public traveling over them. And every engineer out there inspecting a bridge has a responsibility to protect the public above anything else. Next slide, Lee. Uh, Carrington County is the proud own owner of forty-two bridges, uh, throughout the county. Uh, you unfortunately did pick up one more bridge this year. It's a set of culverts, uh, on a township road by the new ice arena.
Thank you.
Out of those forty-two bridges, uh, currently thirteen are in poor condition. And out of those thirteen, two of them are closed. Uh, one due to condition, one due to it's been underwater for years. Uh, so that's thirty-one percent of your bridges are in poor condition currently. Out of those forty-two bridges, ten bridges have weight limit restrictions. And that does not include the two bridges that are enclosed, that are closed. I don't know, four of those bridges with weight limit restrictions are on your county asphalt roads. One is on a county gravel road. And then the remaining five are on township roads. Next slide, Lee. Uh, the county, uh, does have needs, uh, for bridge replacements. In the short term and looking forward into the future, um, you've got eight bridges that are in the need of replacement within the next decade. Uh, three on county asphalt roads. Uh, that, those would be the Fourteenth Avenue Northwest Bridge. Uh, bridge up on, or bridge south of town on Highway twenty, and then one on Highway eleven. And fortunately, all three of those are funded right now, uh, for replacement. And you have one up on a county gravel road, one Highway two over the Big Sioux River. And then four on township roads. And then, yeah, another, another handful of bridges. You know, looking into the next twen- ten to twenty years that, that are in need of replacement. And then all of these bridges are currently in your five-year plan. Um, that is a requirement in order to apply for state funding is that they're included in your five-year plan, so all those bridges are in there. And, yeah, between construction and engineering work, that's over twenty-one million dollars worth of work, which is, uh, roughly five and a half million dollars local share, Carrington County's share of that cost. Assuming, uh, you got grant money to replace those. Next slide, Lee. Uh, this is a map of, uh, your forty-two bridges across the county. Uh, red is poor condition, blue is fair condition, and green is good condition.
Be a lot of red.
Yes, it's getting to be, getting to be more red across the county. Next slide, Lee. You guys feel, feel free to interrupt me at any point if you got questions or wanna stop and go over something more.
In, in terms of longevity, just ballpark, when a new bridge is constructed, what is the estimated life of that bridge? You know, just under normal use.
Sure, I would, I would say we're hoping to get at least seventy-five years out of our new bridges that we're building. Hopefully more like a hundred.
Most of us won't be around to chat on that. Just, that, but that's good. I mean, if they're built, they got to last a long time.
Yes.
Cause some of the ones right now are making that.
Yeah. That's good.
So the rest of the slideshow here is, uh, pretty much pictures, and this is what I'll be outlining in the pictures. Uh, kinda the highlights of the twenty twenty-four, uh, bridge inspections. Unfortunately, uh, had new and reduced load postings across the county. On county asphalt roads, on a county gravel road, and on the township road. And then, uh, also recommendations to put up barriers, uh, on certain portions of the bridge to keep traffic off of, uh, poor and deteriorated areas of bridges. I've got.
Question I had this week from one of the constituents, I told them and referred to the, the, uh, posting and the limit on Fourteenth Avenue. They said, well, the signs aren't up yet. Uh, and I tried to stall, I said, well, they're being made, is that correct?
They are up.
They're up.
They are up.
Got them put up last week or the week before.
Okay.
Soon as the barriers went up alongside the bridge is when the new load, cause we got new load postings, we put the barriers up at the same time. So it is currently up.
That individual thought of the signs weren't up, but then the pertaining to them, so.
Yeah, yeah, there's not a lot we can do until the signs are posted, so, but they are up.
Good.
You mentioned, uh, Mark, the barriers to keep traffic off the, the soft shoulders and the deteriorating shoulders. Any updates on Thirty-first Street by the ice arena there with our barriers?
Yeah, the barriers are here. We just gotta have time to get them put up. We, we need some nice weather to just stay.
Yeah, we got it.
To get caught up.
Yeah, we got it. Okay. So other, yeah, pictures in the coming up slides will be, uh, uh, riprap installation to repair erosion under bridges. Some concrete repair and, and cleaning steel. And then, uh, there's many other repairs that are recommended in our reports that Rick has that aren't highlighted in this slideshow. Next slide, Lee. Uh, so this is the Fourteenth Avenue Northwest Bridge over the Big Sioux River, uh, just northeast of the county highway shop. It had a load posting before. It has received a significant reduction in load capacity. And also a recommendation to put orange drums along the edges of the bridge. Uh, the, the load posting and the orange drums are due to the accelerated deterioration of the concrete uh, since the last bridge inspection. And we've moved this bridge from a two-year inspection cycle to a one-year inspection cycle to keep track of the deterioration more closely until this bridge gets replaced. Next slide, Lee. So this is a picture of, you know, the deterioration from the inspection in twenty twenty-two. And then next slide, Lee. So this is a picture from twenty twenty-four. I mean, you, you can see the difference.
Um.
This is the Fourteenth Avenue.
Yes, this is the Fourteenth Avenue Northwest Bridge. And, uh, you can see the difference in deterioration. The deterioration is accelerating. That's, that's the reason for the reduced load capacity, and to keep traffic off the edges of the bridge till it gets replaced.
Um, Mark, uh, just a question. So what, what kinds of things cause that? Is this just something that just, that could occur with any kind of piece of concrete or, or what?
Salt, the, this, this style of bridge does not handle salt well. Um, so the, these concrete double T units, when they see salt, they deteriorate quickly. And, uh, they're being used, uh, you know, beyond their lifespan already, so.
Thank you.
Rick, how old is, how old is that bridge, you know?
This bridge was built in nineteen seventy-five, if I remember correctly, right in there.
Yep, you're, you're real close, seventy-four.
Not that, it's not, that terribly old then, has it?
No, that's what I mean when I said some of our bridges aren't making that seventy-five to a hundred years. That's, this is part of it.
This bridge has also seen a lot of debris from flooding and stuff from up north in the watershed hitting the structure, so.
A lot of traffic too.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic.
A lot of traffic, find out.
Yes, it's your most heavily traveled county bridge by far.
Lot of trucks.
Next slide, Lee. Uh, this is a bridge up on your county gravel Highway two over the Big Sioux River in the northern part of the county. Uh, this bridge previously had a load posting. Um, this year seen a significant reduction in load capacity. Uh, it's due to the the timber foundation rotting and even failing some of the components. Uh, this bridge has also been moved from a two-years cycle to a one-year cycle to keep a closer eye on it until it gets replaced. Next slide, Lee. This is a close-up of some of the timber components on that same bridge. Uh, the picture on the right shows a timber piling that ha- has failed. Picture on the left shows timber piling that aren't far behind the one on the right. Next slide, Lee. Now, these are your newly acquired culverts on the township road next to the new ice arena. Uh, the culverts are in poor condition. Uh, we did make a recommendation to put a load posting on it that for now just pertains to emergency vehicles, which are fire trucks. They are, they are allowed to have heavier axles than routine commercial traffic, and so those heavier axles of fire trucks are restricted from this set of culverts and will be posted accordingly. Next slide, Lee. Uh, this is, uh, pictures of those same sets of culverts. Um, from inside the culverts, picture on the left shows a bolted seam where the, the steel is tearing at the bolt connections. And then the picture on the right doesn't really do justice, but, uh, the top seam is buckling down um, just due to loads going over the culverts over time.
Now, uh, Rick, are those all, are those eight-foot culverts?
I think most of them are. There's one smaller one on the north end. That one might be.
I don't think that's on the picture, or is it this one up here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, cause one of them's a little bit smaller than the rest of them.
Yeah, three big ones. Uh, tough shape.
Next slide, Lee. Uh, this is a bridge on county Highway seven. Unfortunately, uh, this bridge received ice damage on the upstream side. It would have been in the snow melt of twenty twenty-three that that happened. It went undetected until twenty twenty-four here, till the routine bridge inspection. Um, in order to keep legal loads going across this bridge, we recommended the county put uh, orange barrels along the east railing, uh, to keep trucks off that damaged portion of the bridge, which the county has installed. And so that'll, that'll keep trucks going across the bridge until, uh, until that portion of the bridge gets repaired. Next slide, Lee. And this is the close-up of the same bridge, uh, and the ice damage that occurred on the upstream side. Next slide, Lee. Um, this is a bridge on a township road, Oak Street. It, uh, there's a lot of trucks that use this particular bridge, uh, back to some gravel pits in that area. Uh, again, this one has some rotting on the timber foundation, and in order to continue to allow trucks to use the gravel pits, we made a recommendation to block off the, basically the north lane of this bridge, um, which will allow, continue to allow trucks to use it uh, until this bridge gets replaced.
No, how, the north lane would be the, uh, going back empty lane. That's a, that's a heavy load, that's a heavy load.
Yep, this, this bridge is east and west, and the gravel pit is currently east of there, so the load of trucks will be coming. And, um, we've already, we've ordered signs, the one-lane bridge, there'll still be approximately eighteen feet open on this bridge to go across. Because we'll put up delineators on each side funneling to the south side of the bridge.
Next slide. Now, this is just a close-up of the area that's rotting underneath the bridge. It's these timber components, they rot from the inside out, and it, they're, it's to the point where trucks are allowed to continue to drive over this portion of the bridge that, that timber component is gonna crush and fail, so that's the reason for shutting down a lane of this bridge. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is a bridge on Highway six over the Big Sioux River, just west of the casino. Uh, next slide. This is a picture underneath the bridge of, uh, erosion underneath the bridge that needs to be protected with, uh, large rock, needs to be repaired. Otherwise, there's a potential for, for roadway settlement um, up to the bridge and, uh, potential for roadway washout in a severe flood event.
This was one of the bridges that we put in for a grant last year, and we were declined. So we'll have to get some work done on it.
Next slide, Lee. And picture the same erosion underneath the bridge just from a different angle.
That is a pretty wide span, doesn't it? The long one.
Yes, that is a large bridge. And it is good, in good condition, other than the erosion underneath. So it's, it's worth fixing and extending the lifespan of that bridge. Next slide. Um, this is a bridge on highway thirteen, uh, also known as Sioux Conifer Road. Next slide. Uh, the concrete is deteriorating on the underside of this bridge to the point where, you know, corners of the beams aren't being supported anymore. So we got a recommendation for a concrete repair on this one, just kinda, kinda put a Band-Aid on it till it gets replaced. Next slide. Just a close-up of the concrete deterioration where the, where the beam sits on the foundation. Just. Next slide. And then there's a, there's various bridges, uh, throughout the county too, that are in, in need of, uh, more repairs underneath where there's erosion, uh, riprap settling. It's just an example of, uh, one of those bridges. Next slide. And then there's a, you know, continued need of uh, yearly maintenance on, uh, on bridges. Cleaning, uh, cleaning gravel and sand and salt off the ends of steel beams. Uh, that black area, you can see that the county has done a good job on this bridge trying to slow down the rusting and getting it. That's that, kind of that black paint you see on the, on the girders. That work continues, needs to be continually done, uh, to keep these bridges in decent shape. Next slide. Uh, more examples of, uh, you know, areas of bridges underneath that need to be cleaned off is just part of yearly maintenance. Next slide. And more pictures of the same. Uh, next slide, Lee. Um, I would say in, in general, the funding is not really keeping up with, uh, the condition of the bridges in Cottington County. Right now, uh, county's falling a little bit behind. Uh, your opportunities for funding are through the state. That's called the big program. The, the state currently has fifteen million dollars a year statewide in that program. That's, doesn't go very far statewide. The county has got some of that money in the past. You've had three preservation projects and two preliminary engineering grants. You have yet to get a bridge replacement project through the big program. Um, the way they assign points to the wheel tax. Uh, that, that hurts you guys. I'll go over that at the last part of the presentation here. Uh, your other opportunity for funding is federal funding. And that's what has funded your, your three bridges, um, right now that, that you got money for. Your one on Fourteenth Avenue Northwest. Your one up on highway eleven, and your one on highway twenty. Those three have been funded through the federal dollars that the state has distributed every summer. Unfortunately, they didn't have that money this summer. So there was not an opportunity to apply for that. And then, of course, there's always the option for, for local funding. Um, and your handout, your other handout I gave you. In particular, if you wanna flip to the last page and open that up to, to bigger page. And, and flip that down. I just, I just want to explain, um, how points are assigned to the wheel tax to get state funding. The state looks at what counties charge per axle weighing six thousand pounds or more. So currently Cottington County has two dollars assigned to that. So you get four points. So Cottington County gets four points in the big program on the wheel tax portion of the point system. I highlighted the counties that border Cottington County, and they all get anywhere from eight to ten points. So I just, I want you guys to just be aware when you send in an application to the big program to get state funding that you're automatically four to six points behind the bordering counties. That, you need, uh, based on history, you need around fifty points to get a grant. So if you're four to six points behind the surrounding counties, that could be the difference of you getting, getting, uh, money to replace a bridge or not. This is, this is just for your information. I just want you to be aware how that's structured. I would. Uh, something interesting on this page too is, like I said, the state looks at axles weighing six thousand pounds or more. They don't look at the maximum what, what you charge per vehicle. If you look at Lawrence County, for example, they're getting the full ten points. But they have a maximum vehicle charge very similar to Cottington County. So the, the end impact to the taxpayer in Cottington County would be the, the same or two dollars more per vehicle. I would, I would encourage you guys to, to at least investigate this farther and see if it's worth pursuing to, to be more competitive in getting grant money to replace bridges. It, it's just, it's for your information.
Good information and all.
And on the, on the previous sheet, there is a, there's a number. Uh, Doug at the DOT is a great person to talk to. He's more than happy to answer any questions about, um, how the points work in the big program. And he'd be, he'd be a great resource to talk to if, in fact, you guys do look into that farther. So. You flip to the last slide, Lee. Uh, we really appreciate the county's business. Uh, thank you for your trust. If you guys have any questions now or at any time, feel, feel free to contact me or through Rick. Wasn't real good news in this year's bridge inspection cycle.
On the, uh, wheel tax, that's always, um, referendum. It, it always has to be voted on by the, the constituents, correct? Of course, I guess I could ask the DOT that question. But I mean, we, we couldn't impose the wheel tax as a board. I don't think. Am I right or wrong?
That's a question I can't answer.
Mister, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I believe it was before my time and probably before, uh, Commissioner Johnson's time as well. But I seem to recall that it was voted on by the board, but then it was referred and, and, um, defeated basically. Um, so in other words, the board's decision was reversed by the, by the referendum. I, that's what, that's what I, I'm pretty sure that's the correct story.
And that's my understanding too, but I'm not positive.
Yes, it's just like anything you can implement, and then it can always be referred. Um, on that, when you were talking about, so you can put the max on one axle then. So if we'd move that to say, our max is eight, but it doesn't count because we don't have it on one axle. So if you'd move that limit of eight to one axle, how many points would that be?
Uh, that, that's what I encourage you guys to investigate farther and talk with the DOT, cuz my initial thoughts, you know, looking at that structure is the county could possibly restructure the, the way your wheel tax is charged and have little to no impact on the end user.
Yep.
And get the maximum points for state funding. That, that's the point of me showing you that information. Is it might be a possibility for you guys to, to, to do that and look into it. Take advantage of all the points and the state money you can get to replace a bridge and have, you know, minimal impact to the, and to the taxpayer. I think it's worth looking into.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions for Mark or Rick? Well, thanks for sharing all that. And we know that, uh, we'll have some challenges because if we don't, you know, move ahead, we will keep falling further behind. So, um, it's our job to make sure we have good public, safe roads and they're not free.
Like they said, it's water under the bridge.
And we have the fortune of having the Big Sioux River through our county, so we get a little extra activity due to that. So that's just, uh, the way it is. All right. Thank you, guys. Hey, um, that, can we do number nine? Yeah, uh, need, uh, number nine is, uh, action to declare motor grader surplus to be traded.
Okay, these are two motor graders that we, uh, are replacing. They're both one forty M threes, one's in Henry, one's in Florence. And we, uh, last fall, I think it was in December, got the Sourcewell quotes from John Deere and RDO and Caterpillar. Caterpillar got the bid. The new ones are in. And, uh, we just have to declare these surplus so we can run them across the street and start taking things off the old one and put on the new one. So.
Motion.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Gable, um, to, uh, put these graders as surplus. Any more questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
I'd like to say one thing. I really appreciate Mark for all the hard work he does with the bridge inspections. I know it's tough to hear that we have a lot of crappy bridges, but if you look at those bridges, we have to do something. Because like the one up on County Road Two, the one that had all the pilings that were broke, that's reduced down to five ton. Most, most farmers pickups can't even go across it anymore to get across it. So.
Hold your breath when you go across it.
Yeah, and we're keeping them open as much as we can. But if that goes any worse, that'll be closed. So.
Yep.
That's all I got. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Rick. Um, it, we, we went, we have one. Okay. Let's back up to number eight. There's one other budget review.
Chair is coming, but you evidently have something come up, but he wasn't able to leave here. It's your foreigner budget. Yeah. Uh, so the only increase in that basically was, uh, wage and salary going from twenty-five thousand to twenty-seven thousand, depending on approval, you know, he increases what his rate is per cop. So other than that, you know, and the OHSI, you know, all those things increased, but that, so.
Bring us your microphone on, just to.
Yeah, the. I'm sorry, it was not, Lee. Yes. So I, as I was saying, the only increase was in the wage and salary. So.
The vehicle in there last year, right, for fifty-three thousand. So I'll move.
Well, yeah, I know we didn't have that in. We had to do a budget supplement, but yes, yep.
Move to approve.
And that will just, we're just, we're review. Okay. It gets confusing.
Okay, okay.
We don't, we, this is just review. We don't need a.
Informational like.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, please. Hey, let's move down to number, uh, ten. Discussion, possible action with the Mother of God monastery to request assistance for childcare development. Um, if you'd like to come up.
Mr. Barb, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just tell everybody your name and we'll go from there.
Right into the microphone.
I'm Sister Barb Younger, um, Assistant Prius up at the monastery. Um, I know Sarah Faust was here last week to talk to you all about, uh, her findings and the work of the Childcare Coalition. Been part of the coalition for better part of a year now. And, um, so, you know, for the last eight months, I've led an effort to try and find some solutions. Um, for various reasons, Family Worship Center needs to transition Little Blessings off of their campus. Um, and rather than close it, they came to me, um, looking for help in that, cuz they didn't wanna close it. They know how important this is to Watertown. So Little Blessings, just to give a little black background, um, has served hundreds of families and cared for thousands of children during their almost thirty years. Uh, they are the largest provider in Cottington County. Um, their reputation is stellar. And the educational curriculum preschoolers receive prepares kiddos for success in kindergarten at a very high level. Like I said, it's the largest provider in Cottington County, currently serving a hundred and twenty-five children from ninety-five families who work for eighty businesses in our area. This includes our healthcare systems, our school district, um, all of our ag resource, um, businesses. Um, and so it's a, it's a very widespread presence. Um, currently, Little Blessings employs twenty-four full-time employees, six part-time employees, and six summer college-aged employees. So rather than close, one of the things that we were trying to offer is fourteen thousand square foot of underutilized buildings on our campus to become a new home. This transition wards off a significant closure our system can afford. And it creates an expansion of care from a hundred and twenty-five children to two hundred and twenty-five children. The largest expansion would be in the area of newborns to preschoolers, which is the largest waiting list that almost any daycare has. We've had closures of several daycares and preschools just in the last six months. Um, so this is a community problem. That's why Sarah's leading a coalition. And we can't fix a community problem without community support. My team has visited with businesses for the last four months and parents and even other daycare providers. And some of us are looking for local government to lead the effort like we've seen recently in Rapid City, Sioux Falls, Mitchell, and Madison. Their city and county leaders, elected leaders have stepped forward with different ideas on how to help um, either maintain or expand their childcare. Um, as a small business owner, um, I know very um, concretely every day how important daycare is for employees. So, um, I'm not just talking as someone who's used to working with people and trying to make their lives better, but I'm talking as an employer too in our area. One thing I've learned about daycare is it's a tough business to manage, and quite frankly, it's misunderstood by most people. It operates on a very small profit margin, um, even if a non, even for-profit entities do. Because childcare's gotta be affordable. And so you can't price parents out of the market, but you also can't not pay for qualified individuals. One of the things that has been important to me as part of the coalition is Cottington County's effort to become a early, early learner community. Because that strengthens what we learn between the ages of zero and five, which is where we learn the most. That, those five, first five years are where we learn the most as human beings. That, those first five years are where we learn the most as human beings. And we rely on that foundation for the rest of our lives. So we know that we want trusted providers because they have our most precious. Treasures, and that's our kids. If we don't receive financial support from businesses to transition, we can't go forward with a transition, which means it will close. Um, the solution is clear. The community should pull together to create more capacity. Ensure that there are qualified professionals who guard the safety and educational standards parents expect and children deserve. Now, as I sat here listening to your agenda or when I go to the city council, I, I realize there's so many things that need fixing. Bridges is one of them. I drive over them several times a day. Um, and I realize that this is, um, it's a big ask. So if there is any way that you could help, um, this transition take place rather than us face a closure, um. I'm not asking for the sisters or even for our development. I'm asking for the parents and kids at Little Blessings. I'll take any questions or.
There was a number that was thrown out originally that I had heard, Sister Barb. Can you tell us what the ask would be or?
So, um. So we have, the sisters have already made significant. Um, investment into this. The fourteen thousand square foot buildings have never been in daycare before. So if you're gonna renovate fourteen thousand square feet. Even at two-twenty a square foot, which is a renovation price. You, you end up at a pretty high number, and we have parking lot work that needs to be done too. So. To renovate that fourteen thousand square feet to get the most capacity, which would be two hundred and twenty-five kids, is two point four million dollars. And so, um, I was able to get permission, um, to apply for SD Works loan, which is five hundred thousand. Um, we have quite a number of grants that have been written. Um, that we're looking to hear from between, in September and October totaling about. Two hundred and fifty thousand, but grants, the thing about childcare, which I have learned. Grants have a really small window because they want you to comply and to comply now. So if they give you money in September. You gotta spend that money by November, or it, you, you know what I'm saying? So. They have a lot of parameters that are different than other grants that I've been involved with. So, um, we're running up into Family Worship Centers need to transition this off their campus, trying to avoid a closure. Trying to see what we can do for the maximum potential to come to fruition. For Little Blessings and the community. So it's, it's tight spot. So. If we could get even five hundred thousand of financial support, I think that would help, cause right now we don't have any traction. That's part of our problem. And I know a lot of folks have, have, you know, said, well, it's a business. Why do we have to support a business? It is a nonprofit business, but it's a different business. And at least I would argue that, and because it's our kids, and there is literally nowhere to go. So if Little Blessings closes, or even if that business starts to fall apart because they're state licensed. So their ratio for adults to kids is written in black and white. So if staff members say, I'm gonna go find another job, cause it's gonna close eventually, now they have to let go of kids. So that would happen pretty immediately, cause parents got it. They gotta go to work. They're paying the mortgage and their bills and whatever else they have to do, but their kids have to be somewhere. So we're gonna run into an awful place as a community of being between a rock and a rock with nowhere to go. So, um.
Okay. How many question?
Let's see. Excuse me, Lee, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Charlie. Oh, oh, wait.
How much support have you received from businesses on this? And not, not just, we think we can, how much hard support they?
Very, very little. We, we've gotten more, we think we can, or we could do this, like we could do forty thousand, very little. Um, right now, actual, um. Actual, uh, donations, which we were using Watertown Community Foundation as the place for this to go, um, only about two thousand dollars.
Thank you for your honesty.
Yep.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gable.
No, so, so the, just to review the timing, um, you're, you're saying this fall, so. Like that, that October, you said, like September to November window? If the, if you got that grant?
Well, that's when we, we've applied for several grants. I mean, there's quite a number for childcare. Um, but the window to implement them is very short, like two to three months. You've got to spend that money. And so, um, we're looking for any support, quite honestly, um. Only because the alternative seems really painful. Um, again, it's not that we have to have childcare up there on the hill next week. We know there's an urgent need in Watertown.
Yeah, so I, I guess I'm just thinking through the practicalities of, uh, whether either, you know, in theory. Would it have to come out of this year's budget, which we're not, you know, it's not, it's not budgeted for in twenty twenty-four. Um, or, or what? Um, that's kind of what I'm just trying to process.
Yeah, and I realized that, um, the city would be in the same position. Businesses are in the same position, quite honestly. So when this came up, I, I certainly wasn't expecting this request as a coalition member to help make this happen. Um, and so I, I realized businesses budget for charitable giving too. That this wasn't in a great spot, given, um, the planning that we all need to do to be stewards of our finances. So I, I realize that.
I, I know you do, so.
No, I just appreciate the understanding and the dialogue. Um, I don't, I think. If nothing else comes about, um, if y'all aren't able to, to help, one of the things that I think is most important is that. We continue to talk about this dilemma, that we're honest with parents and providers and, uh, the rest of our community members. Um, because we won't solve this problem without it. And, you know, I mean. Again, as a developer of, uh, our land and, um, trying to make a difference in Watertown, the economic. Impact is pretty stark. So if Little Blessings, we already are behind. We don't have enough childcare spots. Share, shared that with you, and it's all across the state. So if we can't even maintain what we have. We're in, we're, we will find ourselves in more trouble be, before the end of twenty twenty-four. And it's hard to dig yourself out when it's a dogpile, and that's what I'm afraid of as far as an economic development, um. Perspective.
Well, when the studies that continue to come out for our community and for our region, Cottington County and other. Uh, counties in South Dakota show that there's a child. You know, daycare need, uh, and we're in a bad position.
Yeah, well, here's one of my fears too. So, um, you know, Little Blessings has. Quite a number of employees that have been there for ten, fifteen, twenty years. Um. And just like a teacher or a nurse or being in the military, it's kind of a call. You do it because you love it. What I'm afraid will happen is that. Those employees have to pay their bills too. Once this is announced, if it's going to close, they will go find other positions and will lose them to that job forever. Because they don't make a lot of money. There's not great benefits. And that's one of the things while, why I think, I would say that daycare is misunderstood the type of business it is. You do it because you love those kids. You love being with little ones. Not everybody can do that. And so. I'm afraid that we will end up with a, a provider deficit also in this transition. It's an unintended consequence. It's not what Family Worship Center, if I can speak for them, um, it's not what they intend. It's not what they want to have happen. But they have other corporate things that they have to pay attention to. Um, and I'll just speak for them real quickly. They are part of a larger congregation, just like. Um, IC Parish doesn't own IC. The bishop owns that. So. A bigger congregation owns Family Worship Center, right? And so they have corporate things they've got to do. So it's a, it is a real conundrum. Um, I do want to say too, we've done our due diligence because we have contacted, um. For-profit providers, which is not where I like to operate. But for instance, Bright Horizons, which has S, is down in, in, um, Brookings with SCSU. And even some of the for-profits down in Sioux Falls. The, um, we would price our parents right out of the care. A for-profit entity, you would be looking at three hundred, three hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars a week. To watch a little one. Right now, Little Blessings is at two-ten. And so. The, the conundrum is real. And so we've done a lot of research. We've done a lot of work. I don't have all the answers. But I know that all the solutions that are on the table are part of the answer, whether it's expanding EduCare at Lake Area Tech. Whether it's transitioning Little Blessings. Or, um, even, you know, what do we do with the Roosevelt, Roosevelt Building? You know, how can that, we need all those things to get to, how are we gonna get to the six hundred? But if we now lose a hundred and twenty-five, now we're at seven twenty-five.
Yeah.
So they don't have a timeframe as to when they will need to shut their doors?
Well, so they're gonna have to close. If we aren't in, if we aren't. The timeframe would be something like this. If we're not going to be swinging the hammer and renovating our buildings. Then it would have to close. And they could only hang on as long as they can keep the licensure numbers, right? Cause then the, as a business, it starts to fall apart. I don't know how long that'll take. Or what Family Worship Center would necessarily do to make that happen. So I don't want, I don't want to speak for them, but it's, you kind of know.
Mm-hmm.
And so if they, if we are in construction. They will keep Little Blessings going for us to transition, even if it's into February. Because it'll take four to six months for us to renovate that fourteen thousand square feet. We've already got bids. We've got a GMP. We've, we've got the architectural plans have been approved by the state. We've changed some of the zoning on our property through the city. So we've done our due diligence. We literally are ready to swing the hammer. If we can get funding.
Well, I'm not a big fan of what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. But by the lack of support from businesses. I get the feeling that they don't feel this is as important as you do. And. Basically. Uh. If you can't afford childcare, it's an economic thing that you will respect your income to start with. And nobody mentioned the number of people that are, that might be out of jobs. Nobody is guaranteed a job for the rest of their life unless you work for the government.
So if Sister Barbara, if you had to throw out a number for this body. Uh, we now know what the need is. What a realistic number for us to consider, what would that number be?
If. By some miracle, cause I think that's where, as a woman of faith, that's what I'm looking at. Um, we really need like five hundred thousand dollars to get this going. Because then with the SDS, uh, SD Works loan, now I've got a million dollars to work with.
Okay.
Do, do you know what I'm saying? And so.
I know that the city's been approached too with the idea of contributing.
And, right, and I haven't gotten a number from them. I'm gonna talk with the mayor later today, so. And we've been in dialogue for months about this, um, just like Sarah's been in dialogue with you all, you know? And I, never did I think nor would I want the city or the county to be the solution. It's a community problem.
Right.
You know, um. You know, that's why we were willing to put, put money into it. We've already probably put about. Two hundred and fifty thousand into it, and then just if you look at the buildings, which once you renovate a buildings like that. You're looking at that being the, that purpose for twenty, thirty or more years. So we've already taken a million dollars worth of building and, and land. And said, we'll set this aside for this. So you could say already our, our donation's one point two-five million.
Right.
Um, so there has been a large donation. Um, and again, we don't need to do this for our development. We just know there's a need in Watertown.
So Brenda, what would this look like if we were to take action? Where would, when would we do this and where would it come from?
Good question. I would have to do. Some calculating if there's some other sort of sources, you know, um. Yeah, I would have to do a little looking to see if that's something that.
Okay.
We would be able to come up with. Or be nicer.
In the legal realms of things too.
I know.
And, uh.
Or if the city and county could split it.
Everybody understands there's a need. Like that's the need, and it's a, it's a tough, tough question.
It is.
We recognize our role, I think this body does in government to also take care of the people that we. Are. Uh, voted into office to take care of, and sometimes that's a community need. And so. Um, we understand that and. I'm willing to make a motion, but I just don't know what the motion's gonna be. But, uh, we're gonna sit on that for now, I think, and have further discussions, but we need to, uh, we need to talk about that.
No, right.
Much appreciate the information, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, and I'm, like I said, I'm happy to be part of the solution. I appreciate all your opinions and even looking at it, um. I guess if I could say if there was some way to, to know that it was earmarked. Even for the other side of the new year, that would be a help to me. That would be a help to get this going, if that was something in your budget, budgetary action that you might. Think of, I think that would, would give us traction. It would give us affirmation. And it would give other people a chance to buy in. So I really appreciate the opportunity.
So if I may ask, what are other counties? Like, it, it'd be interesting to visit with some of those other counties that have found. Ways to help or be part of the process, like.
So some of them have sponsored, um, the, some of the construction of the daycares. Um, in Mitchell, Mitchell set aside a million dollars. And I could, I certainly can, I have y'all's email. I'm sure I could certainly send you the articles. Um, Madison did something with Reed. Um, recently, and, and so of course, like Sioux Falls took part of their. Their grant money, and they've hired a, like a daycare development person to, to answer to, I think, the city council.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but so those kind of efforts are helpful. And I know you, we have Sarah, who's done a phenomenal job in all the different areas. Which is why I'm sitting here today, because of Sarah's leadership. So, um. So I can send you more information on what they did. I don't know that Cottington County qualifies for a Reed loan. Because we don't have the low-income numbers, which is good, right? But it's, it takes us out of that. We've also, I've looked at, uh, block grants from, uh. Todd Kay's at First District and other things. So. Again, we've done our work. We have really, the last eight months have really worked hard to find a solution and would be open to any ideas. Whatever kind of collaboration we can pull off. That's where I think Watertown and Cottington County can be the strongest. So. That's, that's how we solve the problem.
Right. I can reach out to those two counties.
As well. Thank you very much.
Kind of see.
Yeah, I, I think for now, we'll, if I'm hearing everyone, we'll, we'll, we'll do some checking and looking. You know, obviously we're not taking any motion or action or anything for now, but it's good for public awareness that.
There's a problem.
That there's a, a need and it, and it's, it's vital to our community that we try and help with some kind of a solution.
Right. Right.
And that, and that's what I appreciate most about the city and the county commissioners looking at it and just saying, what do we do? So, thank you very much.
Yes, Sister Barb, because I know the media is listening to this, um. If there is a business out there that would like to contribute to this, who do they contact? Where do they go?
Watertown Area Community Foundation is taking all funds, um, that have been, um. Donated through their portal, or you can call, uh, Kami. Uh, they're at the office and, you know, write a check, whichever way you would like. Um, it could be anonymous if that's something that you would like, a, a business owner or a person would like to do too.
Okay.
So, um.
Awesome. Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Y'all have a good day.
You too.
Okay, let's, uh. Move down to number eleven, uh, action to approve the auditor's account. With treasurer and note monthly register of these fees.
Okay, you have that in your packet as well. Uh, you can see at the end of the business day of July twenty twenty-four is thirty-two million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and three sixty-three. Uh, you have your general ledger cash balances, your custodial funds. And then obviously, um. The, the settlement with the treasurer, all the different amounts and, and coins and so forth. And the. And the registered deeds fee or amount that she collected during the month of July was twenty-nine thousand ninety-three dollars. That's it, unless someone has any questions.
Move to approve. A second.
Uh motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable, um to approve. The auditor in the month in the registered deeds fees. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, number twelve, action to approve cellphone stipend for Thomas Pauli, Director of Equalization Office.
Correct. He's the new hire and um we'll do half of the month of July since he started on the fifteenth and then the rest of the year and going forward. That he would receive a cellphone stipend like the other individuals in that office that do the same sort of uh job.
So move.
Waterman, second by.
And it is forty dollars a month is what his cellphone stipend would be. It was Waterman and Gable?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, number thirteen, action to approve abatement.
No abatement, sorry.
Number fourteen, action to approve claims for payment.
And you have them laying on your desk. I don't know if there was any claims that. Obviously are on page three, our court-appointed attorney claims for the month of July was a hundred and one thousand three hundred and forty, forty-seven. Uh we did have in the government buildings, another payment for the HVAC upgrade to Johnson Controls. A hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-eight sixty. That obviously has already been an approved um. But just those claims keep coming in. Other than that, I don't have anything unless someone else has.
I have a question, Brenda, on page seven.
Okay.
And I I was just going through this and I, we we pay rent to a lot of. Uh entities and you you know, are these all?
So that's some of that ERA two money that we receive that we do budget supplements. Yep. Yeah, so we pay the rent, but then we get reimbursed from the state for those. So.
Okay, because if you go through them, I, there's fifteen probably different places that we pay rent to.
Yeah.
And I but, oh, you know, this is, but that's what I assumed it was. Thank you.
Yep, you are welcome.
Brenda, I also have a question.
Okay, what page?
Seven.
Okay.
Uh item six twenty-one.
Yeah, I don't know. You'd have to ask Sarah that. I'm not sure what that was involved. She submitted that claim, so.
Okay.
I don't know.
Looks like it's an ad maybe in the program about, I'm guessing, Cottington County.
Yeah, shocking. So it maybe was through their community. Um what is that? Grant. So sometimes it'll come through, but then it gets reimbursed through the grant as well, so.
I had another question, but I is on the jail. Did we pay to? Uh looks like we paid the meal expenses twice.
I believe, wasn't that two different amounts though?
Oh, we're.
What page are you on?
I I don't, I can't find it now.
It's probably behind here.
Five and six.
Five? All right. I mean, they're back to back.
Yes, I did notice that as well. It was sometimes they missed the the cutoff, so one um. Might have came later, so they both got included in on the same month. That will help happen as well.
Okay, that's what I was wondering what happened there.
Yeah, that can, yeah. And that's happened with some of our other claims too. So when we have an early cutoff like we did. Last month and some of those come in later, so they end up paying two months the next month. If we don't get additional fees, if it's something that we will get um an interest charge or a late fee, we try to do those in between. That's what we have customarily tried to catch. But if they don't charge us anything, we'll just leave it till the next month.
And again, in all my years that I've been sitting behind this desk, I think this is a new record.
Yeah, I know.
Two million four hundred and twenty-three thousand. That's a lot of money. It's a.
And I have two add-ons. Uh the extension had a couple of claims come in later after we had already um printed out. All the list. Um for they're both for extension. One was for their Midcontinent bill, three hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. And the other one was her Relia Bank Visa bill, uh one thousand three oh two ninety-four. So that brings it to a new total. Uh the total of the extension then is one thousand six sixteen twenty-three. The new total then for county claims is two million four hundred twenty-four thousand. Seven hundred dollars thirty-six cents. State pass-through dollars, though. Seven hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. So that's state pass-through. So the actual amount of county claims, one million six hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and forty-two cents.
It's not as bad.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Waterman uh to uh approve these claims. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number fifteen, is there a?
No budget supplement, not this week.
Uh any uh?
Personnel, we have some travel.
Yeah, let's go down to seventeen.
Um, okay, so you have several uh West Nile virus. There's a conference going on, so. There's um several individuals that will be attending that. And. Sorry, I'll get flipped through these. Then you have also a weed and pest weed commission meeting and tour. An individual will be attending that. And then the state's attorney's office has an individual that would be going to training. Um on that Coalition for Ju- Juvenile Justice, but all the costs will be funded through the Boys and Girls Club through the JD. JDAI grant. So that one, there's no cost to the county. They just need approval to attend.
So second.
A motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen um to approve the travel requests. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number eighteen, public notice for a possible quorum of commissioners.
Tomorrow.
Yep, tomorrow there'll be a, our Sioux Valley Commission Association is gonna be here in Watertown.
Uh a que- a comment, Steve could probably answer this. They may be working on the parking lot. Um can we recommend the H door to come in? Door H? Okay.
Now scheduled probably September.
Okay, so the uh doors of the north end will work. Do you know where the meeting will be held inside the building?
Yeah, it's in the kitchen is where it normally is. Yeah, it will be in the kitchen where the commissioners meet. And then after dinner, the other groups will split off in the. First chamber.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're fine. I talked to Scott yesterday. We lined it up. Got it all finalized.
Mister Chair, there, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, so Friday, there's a Republican Women's Meeting, so um I'm planning to speak at that, so. It's this Friday at Pizza Ranch at lunchtime. And I think there, so sometimes we attend that.
What are you gonna be speaking about, Lee?
What else? The jail.
Oh, okay. Um, right.
Oh, yeah, there is the search and rescue banquet Thursday night um out at the event center. I don't know if there'll be a quorum of you there.
Anybody else have anything else? Okay, let's move down to uh nineteen. Is there any old business? A number twenty, any new business? Seeing none, um now is the number twenty-one is time for the public comment, the open public comment. Don't see any or the phone. Any commissioner comments? Seeing none, we'll go down to uh twenty-two. I haven't been.
No need for a.
Oh, wait. For, okay, we need an executive session for number three. Motion by Van Dusen, second by Waterman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Ten nineteen.